Order the Bristol, Tennessee City Council meeting, February the sixth to order. Mary Lee, would you take your call?
Fire Robin?
Here.
Hutton?
Here.
Powers?
Here.
Luttrell?
Here.
Turner?
Here. Welcome, everyone, and thank you for attending the meeting. There are a number of opportunities to speak on matters of the city business this evening. She'd explaining those opportunities has been made available when entering the meeting room. As we go forward in with the night's agenda, I will note each time when public comment is welcome. In addition, a sign up has been provided as you enter council chambers. Those individuals wishing to speak directly to the city council. I'd like now to ask Vice Mayor Hutton to lead us in invocation and Councilman Luttrell to lead us in our pledge.
Join me as I pray. God, we give you thanks for allowing us to have the freedom to gather in this place at this hour and do the work of this city. We don't take that for granted. It is a it is a real honor that the people of this community have given us, but at the same time, it is providential from your hand that we would be here for such a time as this. And so we ask, Lord, that you help us to do things in a way that's pleasing to you. That is a way that gives an honor to you in a way that serves the needs of this community above and beyond. Lord, thank you for all that are gathered in this in this space, for these students from Tennessee High and for those, Lord, who are here on different kinds of business. I pray, God, that you would bless them. And I ask, Lord, that you would bless this city and that you would help it to flourish in profound and astounding ways. Lord, we give you this night and we thank you for it. And we lift all this to you in the awesome name of Jesus. Amen.
Please place the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Ms. Bojois, are there any additions?
No, there are none.
This evening. Okay. We have no proclamations, so I guess we're up to our Board of Education report.
That was fast. I'm not normally up here that fast.
I know.
Had to be on it. Good evening, everyone. It's good to see you all. I just have a couple of things. First of all, just wanted to let you know that February is National Career Technical Education Month. And I know that you have reported to you all how proud I am of our CTE department and the vocational opportunities we have for our students at Tennessee High School. And certainly, we've expanded that to TOPPS, our online school, as well as TMS now. But I wanted to let you know that we have been approved for a pre-apprentice pre-apprenticeship in teacher preparation. And so in the fall, we hope to be able to hire, really designate a couple of students who will be taking dual enrollment classes, their junior and senior year at Tennessee High School, and then they will transition to a paid position with us as an educational assistant, have their college coursework paid for through Northeast State, and then transition and finish and graduate through Austin P. And hopefully, that actually expedites their earning a teaching degree by a year or two, so that'll be quicker. We are not seeing a teacher shortage in Bristol, thankfully, or knock on wood, we're fortunate that we have not experienced that. But we're hoping this will be something that will deter that in the future and that we can target some high need teacher areas like math or special education, those kinds of areas that we struggle sometimes to hire. So very excited about that new pre-apprenticeship program at Tennessee High School. And then I'd just like to note our Teachers of the Year for your reference. Congratulations to Casey Jackson at Anderson, Andrea Powell at Evoqua, Sammy Chafin at Fairmount, Jacob Memes at Holston View, Karen Duncan at Haynesfield, Ginger Davis at TMS, Amber Davis at Tennessee High School, and Jeannie Gess at TOPPS. And among those folks, Andrea Powell at Evoqua, Amber Davis at Tennessee High School, and Ginger Davis at Tennessee Middle School were selected as our district representatives. So very proud of those folks. And then I would just like to thank some city staff who've really supported us along the way we've worked. I know some of my staff have worked with some of city staff on some enrollment and zoning kinds of data. So we appreciate the support we've received from them. But most recently, Community University, again, is has been such a big hit. Our students have really enjoyed that, get so much out of it and really see how much is involved in city services and how extensive that is. And I know that's not easy for city staff to give up their time and mentor our students, so I appreciate that. And especially appreciate the leadership of John Luttrell and Ann Dunn and carrying that out and organizing that for us. Thank you very much for that. That's all I have unless you have questions for me.
Thank you. All right, we have no public hearings this evening. Next is the appearance of citizens. Got a list here and we just ask that you keep your comments to three minutes and under. We have one gentleman, Mr. Eddie Mayberry. You just say your name and your address when you get to the podium.
My name is Eddie Mayberry, Mr. Mayor, City Council. We are here to speak on behalf of the Sunnybrook subdivision where we have a building going up that we certainly tried our best to try to keep it from going there. But so some kind of way they got to the Supreme Court of the state and they got it going. However, I was stopped this morning with a concern of one of our neighbors about the building site itself. His house is adjacent, his property adjacent to the property where the building is going up. And he had a major concern this morning as to whether he need to be in contact with someone here. I spoke with Sherri just a little bit ago, and she says that she will be involved in the signing off on that. But his concern right now is that they got a fence running crossing back and it's falling over. And I don't know what they're gonna do to straighten that up. I don't know what type of action you need to take at this time, will you take any action? But anyway, he's wanting you to know that there is a problem that he have perceived that he feel need to be addressed prior to getting signed off on that property there. Thank you, Harold.
Okay, thank you. I'm sure Sherri will be in touch with. Okay, next we have one appointment to the Beer Board and we have one candidate, Mr. Matt Slagle. Would anyone like to speak on Matt's behalf? I guess I could, or you?
I would love to. I have served on the Beer Board with Mr. Slagle and he has done an excellent job leading the Beer Board. And also, I've seen him in action representing us on Sullivan County Commission. I think he's a outstanding leader and an outstanding man just in general, and I wholeheartedly support him in this role.
I agree. All right.
Okay. So Vice Mayor Hutton has Matthew Slagle, Councilwoman Powers has Matthew Slagle, Mayor Turner has Matthew Slagle, Councilman Luttrell has Matthew Slagle, and Councilwoman Fire Robin has Matthew Slagle.
Okay, next we have ordinance twenty-four dash one, the first reading to amend the budget and appropriation of funds for the fiscal year twenty... Sorry about that. Fiscal July first, twenty twenty-three through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. Holly will present to us and...
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening, council members. This is just what we talked about in the council work session. There were a couple of changes just to get things on the correct line items from your memo. And I also added the debt service transfer as well for the twenty twenty-three bonds that we issued in December. So this just takes the general fund expenditure line on them, two thirty-three eight oh two three seventy. That includes the Bristol Public Library additional amount of the eighty-three hundred. We had a transfer to the school system for the two hundred thousand, so that will actually increase the transfer to the general purpose school fund non-capital or non-routine capital, sorry. It is for capital, it's non-routine. So that takes that from the two hundred fifty thousand to four hundred fifty thousand, that's the two hundred thousand dollars for the Stone Castle. We have the Capital Projects Facilities Fund. That increase to fourteen thousand oh sixty-one eight eighty-three. That is for the pickleball and then the Weaver Pike projects as well. And there's a transfer from general fund to fund the pickleball for the three million. The Weaver Pike is covered when the twenty twenty-three bond issue. And then the debt service fund, like I said, there'll be a transfer from the general to debt service fund. That increases by that. It's about one hundred and seventy-one thousand, three hundred and sixty-seven dollars to pay for the interest that's due in June for that. If you have any questions, be happy to answer it.
Do I have a motion?
Make a motion that we approve ordinance twenty-four dash one to amend the budget appropriating funds for fiscal year July one, twenty twenty-three through June thirty, twenty twenty-four.
I'll second that.
Got a motion and a second?
I'd just like to say that I'm glad to see some of our projects finally moving forward. We've talked about a lot of these for quite a while. The Stone Castle, Dr. Tudor, I know that you're providing, y'all are providing oversight for that, but it's needed to be done for quite a while. I'm excited about the pickleball courts. I think the Lavender family is doing a great job with that. And that project will move forward and we'll get to see the return on that investment, I think, much sooner rather than later. And of course, to have the property at nineteen thirty-three Weaver Pike, we have needed to make some plans for a project with the city garage for probably the past twenty years. And we're just delighted that this property became available. So this is how the people's tax money is being spent, and it's being spent with an eye on the return on investment. All of these will have a definite return on the investment in in multiple multitude of ways. So I'm very happy to support this. It's been a long time coming, and I look forward to seeing even others of our projects being put into motion.
Would anyone in the audience like to address counsel on this matter? Seen none. Mary Lee?
Fire Robin?
Yes.
Hutton?
Yes.
Powers?
Yes.
Luttrell?
Yes.
Turner?
Yes. There will be a public hearing on this item at the next city council meeting, so... All right, next we're on to resolution twenty-four dash eleven, a resolution authorizing the city's participation in a jointly funded project through the Sullivan County Economic Development Partnership Networks. Clay Walker is here to present.
Thank you, Mayor. Of course, we've been over this in work session and many of you in our board meetings. And again, this is kind of following through with our agreement several years ago to invest four million dollars in the other end of the county that we did in Bristol that became the rail site that Seaman Corporation recently announced that they would locate on. This is about the same size as that, about a forty acre site just off Airport Parkway. As you're going toward the airport and Leclerc is on your right, it is the track line just before you get to Leclerc. And it has been owned by KDB. It has been undeveloped for the years they have owned it, and we would like to control it. Do the engineering, go for grants, just as we've the same formula that you guys are so familiar with because we've just done three projects in a row, working in partnership with you and BTS. And so what we thought about funding this one, the thing that slowed us down on the site in PP two was certificate of public need requires to do a bond to do the industrial, buy the industrial property. So if we buy it with cash on hand, divide it among our partners and do the engineering, that gets us to where we can start pursuing grants and work on the funding for the completion. But even before we start that work, it puts us in a spot to where we have an engineering plan and control of the property to where we could show a company what it would cost, how much time it would take, and immediately begin marketing it and hopefully get somebody on there a lot quicker that way. And then just keep going forward with all the properties. Again, we have seen, when I get in front of this body, I know that I'm talking to people who believe in the investment because you've had win after win like this. And this is just again, the whole purpose of Networks. And we would like your approval to Bristol's per formula since the beginning of Networks. You're part of the a little over one million dollars would be seventeen percent of that, and that would come to a hundred eighty-seven thousand dollars. And that is what we're here to ask that you do. We have spoken at the Bluff City Workshop. Mayor Broyles presented that Friday and has positive results, but we haven't gone before a formal vote. I've spoken to many county commissioners who agreed to sponsor this, and we hope to get on their next work session. And of course, Kingsport has a KDB meeting today, and they're aware of it. And I mean, if if they don't vote for it, I mean, not me over with a feather on that one. But but anyway, so that's where we are with the others. You would be the first to approve it. And I think that says a lot about our partnership that Bristol said, hey, let's look at this and get this thing rolling when it's actually in Kingsport City Women's. So thank you for your attention to this and appreciate a positive vote for it.
Certain questions for Mr. Walker?
Thanks for spending time with us at the work session and coming back today. And thanks for everything you and Networks does in the economic development and the relationships you have. And this is successes that we're real proud of.
No, you're welcome. It's our it's our pleasure to work with your team.
Thank you. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to address counsel on this matter? Seen none. Do I have a motion?
I make a motion, we approve resolution twenty-four eleven, authorizing our partnership through Sullivan County Economic Development with Networks.
Second.
I'll second that. And I'd I'd like to say that, you know, you you have to practice what you preach, right? And we've been very fortunate here in Bristol. We've our team has landed a multiple, very successful grants from the state that have immediately been turned into projects of which we can all in the county can all benefit. And when we, as Clay said, entered into the agreement about the rail spur, it was with the understanding that it would be reciprocated to the other end of the county. And I think it's important that we we play with transparency and that we play fairly. And, you know, regionalism begins at home, right? So I'm glad to support this.
I'd just like to add to that is that, you know, unless you have sites that's ready for for people when they're when they're looking, then, you know, they're gonna go somewhere else. So that's, I guess, the mantra that we've been living by is that, you know, we have pad ready sites, we have land available for development. And I just think we need to stay on top of that and continue because, you know, the area is growing and no question about it. And but you you don't want to stop that momentum by not having sites that people can come and start building on.
All right. Motion and second, I guess, Mary Lee?
Fire Robin?
Yes.
Hutton?
Yes.
Powers?
Yes.
Luttrell?
Yes.
Turner?
Yes. All right, next we have resolution twenty-four dash twelve, approving tax equivalent payments. And Director of Finance, Holly Baron, will give us the details.
Okay, this is a resolution just to approve the in lieu of payments from Bristol Tennessee Essential Services. They're a proprietary fund of the city along with our utility funds. They they there's a state provision for them to do in lieu of payments. So this is just calculating what their their grand total would be, one million nine hundred seventy-eight thousand seven ninety-nine fifty-three. And that's broken down between the electric and the cable internet and telecommunications segments. And the amount that Bristol will receive in total is in one million five hundred twenty-four thousand five hundred thirty-eight ninety-one. It is a little bit lower than last year, but there's also an equalization rate in that calculation as well, and that's point six six seven one percent. So that's why that's a little bit lower than what we normally see. If you have any questions?
Why was the equalization rate? I understand there's a formula and I understand what that number is, but why would why would the was it that the equalization rate went down?
Yes.
And is that due to TVA selling their energy and services at a lesser rate?
No, it's got to do with the total value...
Property tax related. Where they value the personal property tax a little bit lower.
Oh, okay.
They have an equalization rate ever so many years.
All right.
And that went into effect this year.
Oh, okay.
So it affected all every property, personal property.
So is this the first year that that's gone into effect?
No. It is, it's probably affected it more this year, I believe, because of the way the property tax rates are out there and they're trying to equalize those. And I think our property, our real property will probably be affected this next year from from what I've been told.
Okay. Because I I'm just trying to wrap my head around this because, you know, they reassessed property values. Was it two years ago?
No.
Um, we're twenty-three is a ratio year, and then twenty-five calendar year, twenty-five will be a reappraisal year for the property.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Okay.
Is there anyone from the public that would like to address counsel on this matter? I've seen none. Do I have a motion?
Mayor, I have a question. How will this affect our budget moving forward?
Well, as far as this amount, we're...
This is an on paper sort of thing, but...
Right, but it's of each year, it's gonna vary, it varies. It's not exactly the same every year that it comes in. I mean, it's it's it varies every single year. This year was, and it...
You're not here.
What was the difference this year? It was...
Yeah. Three hundred fifty-nine one sixteen.
So I guess...
So we budget an average or an estimated amount, and I did not go back and look at what we budgeted for this year. So any under would be balanced out at the end of the year, made up either by underspending or an adjustment at the end of the year. And then we look at that in making our recommendations for revenues moving into the next fiscal year. And I don't, we haven't started our discussions for next fiscal year, so we'll certainly talk with the BTS staff and make sure that we're we're getting as accurate a number as we can. But it's always just that conservative estimate is what we try and go for.
Do you do y'all know what our estimate was for this year?
I don't, I did not look that up, I'm sorry.
So we were at the one point eight as the estimate for...
We did two years longer than we did last year, so we probably, you know, budgeted a little higher than we should have. But it would have been lower even if we would have scaled that back a little bit. I think it would still have been lower, but based on that equalization rate at the top.
Right. Okay. All right, thank you.
So this was an anticipated number or somewhere in this magnitude?
Yeah, we usually just kind of look and see what we got and then make it the same or a little lower it just a little bit. It's typical to see it lower a little just based on this is based on the asset value. And as depreciation brings that down a little bit, then then your estimate can be a little bit lower. But but with that's a normal equalization rate, so that wasn't probably calculated into it.
It just seems lower than it than I remember it ever being.
The equalization rate, I think, took a big hit this year, too.
Okay. Thank you.
Do I have a, we've got a motion, do I have a second?
Do we have a motion?
I don't think we have a motion.
We don't have a motion yet.
Who have a motion?
Motion to approve the resolution twenty-four twelve, approving tax equivalent payments.
Second.
I'll second.
Motion and a second? Any other discussion?
Fire Robin?
Yes.
Hutton?
Yes.
Powers?
Yes.
Luttrell?
Yes.
Turner?
Yes. All right, next we have resolution twenty-four dash thirteen, a resolution designate members of city council to serve on city boards for municipal and non-municipal agencies. Bojois, would you?
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the council. This is an annual action that the council takes. This was discussed at the last work session. And per those discussions, what you have in front of you are the designations for this coming year. The only changes that were made are the Home Consortium Board. Mayor Turner is now designated for that, replacing Vice Mayor Hutton due to some scheduling conflicts. And then the addition of the Sullivan County Health Department Health Council. It's a new council, and Councilwoman Fire Robin was appointed to that, and that was from the county.
Okay. See, may I have any questions for Mr. Bojois? Is there anyone in the public that would like to address counsel on this? Seeing none, do I have a motion?
Motion to approve resolution twenty-four...
Motion to approve Resolution twenty-four twenty-two.
Second.
Got a motion and a second, discussion?
I'd like to, I'd like to make an amendment to this list, so I'd make a motion that we amend this list, and rather than have Bill Sora as the Tri-City Airport Commissioner, that we would, we would put our current city manager in that slot, so I'd make that motion to have Kelly Bourgeois as our representative on the Tri-City Airport Commission. So, I'm going to make a motion.
All right, got a motion and a second? I'll second. Motion, so, got a motion and a second on the amendment, discussion?
Let me, I'll just state why I think this is important, and I, I think that this is actually having our current city manager on the Airport Commission is what's best for Bristol, even at this time. I, I recall and, and heard from other council people at that time, the desire to keep Mr. Sora in that role. Mr. Sora, I actually had a conversation with him, and he wants to stay in that role, and, but I don't, I'm not compelled to think that that is the best thing for the city of Bristol, and the reason for that is Kelly is, is helping us as a city to develop a strategic plan in the next couple of weeks, so she will be, as she has been already, very aware of what's happening within the city of Bristol itself, and at the same time that the airport is going through a strategic plan, and Kelly is a part of that process as well. We heard from Clay Walker a few minutes ago, with economic development coming near the airport, that's a big piece and part of, of our own economic developments, as well as our regions, and I think our current city manager is in the best possible position to represent the needs of our city on that board. I recognize that, that this might, I know Mr. Sora has served as the chair of that for the last year. Personally, I don't, I think that there's, there's a reason why there's policies and in place, and bylaws on, on councils to have a replacement if they need to, and that's why there's a vice chair. I don't find that as a compelling enough reason to keep him in that position, because of all the things, I think it's good for Bristol, I think it's better for Bristol. I also think it sends a clear message to our community, and, and to the Airport Board, and to this region, that we as a council actually stand behind our city manager that we hired. She is an excellent city manager, she's done a fantastic job, I think, for her to, to do all the work, and then not have a voice and a vote at the table is, is not the greatest message to send. I think that's a bigger message than retaining Bill, the former city manager, retired city manager, in that position. So, that's why I think it's important that we make that shift and that change, I think it's, I think it's the right time to do that. I don't think waiting another year is, I don't, I don't think it's helpful, just, just to fulfill a, a time as a city, a chair. I think it's better for our city that way, so.
Well, and I would say, with that, if my decision on this is, it, it has nothing to do with who is currently there, or who it could have been, or who it is, for me, it is supporting our current city manager in her role, and having, I mean, we have, Bristol, Virginia has a vote on that board, their city manager is on the board, and I think that-
He's on the board.
We, as a city, need our city manager in there, who has all the knowledge of what is going on within our community right now, and with economic development, and having that voice, so that's why I'm supportive of putting Kelly on this board. Mr.?
Call for a question?
Second.
Okay.
All right, we have to vote on calling the question, if you call the question, may I have to vote on whether we can call the question?
Just call for that.
Now, we have to vote on, we have to vote on him calling the question, we can't just rush to the vote.
Right. It might be easier to just withdraw the call for the question. It seems like discussion may be done.
All right, so we have a motion and a second on the amendment, so I guess we're ready for a vote.
Okay. Fire Robin?
No.
Hutton?
Yes.
Powers?
No.
Luttrell?
No.
Turner?
Yes. Okay, so now we are back to our-
Original resolution.
Original Resolution twenty-four dash twelve. So, do I have a motion on-
We already have a motion.
We have a motion.
So, it's discussion on the original resolution.
In a second, if you've got discussion, if there's no other discussion, then we'll take a vote.
Fire Robin?
Yes.
Hutton?
No.
Powers?
Yes.
Luttrell?
Yes.
Turner?
No. Next, we are on to the consent agenda.
Thank you, Mayor, and council. The consent agenda items tonight are the minutes of the January ninth city council meeting, minutes of the January twenty-third city council work session, approval of Resolution twenty-four dash fourteen, authorizing the city to enter into an administrative services agreement for the city's health and dental plans, approval of Resolution twenty-four dash fifteen, awarding a bid for concrete repair and, and replacement at Fire Station Three, approval of Resolution twenty-four dash sixteen, awarding a bid for purchase of the service body with crane reinforcement for the vehicle for the water treatment plant, approval of Resolution twenty-four dash seventeen, authorizing the city to apply for HIP crisis funds, funding from the Federal Transit Administration, approval of Resolution twenty-four dash eighteen, authorizing the city to apply for FTA urbanized area formula grants, and TDOT Urban Operating Assistance Program funding for fiscal years twenty-four through twenty-seven, approval of Resolution twenty-four dash nineteen, authorizing the purchase of equipment upfitting for the Police Department Dodge Durangos, approval of Resolution twenty-four dash twenty, approving the installation of mobile data terminal mounts and associated equipment for those police vehicles, and approval of Resolution twenty-four dash twenty-one, authorizing the purchase of police in-car video systems.
Okay, is there anything any member would like removed from the consent agenda? If not, do I have a motion?
Motion to approve the Resolution twenty-four twenty-three of the consent agenda.
Do, what? Okay.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve, okay.
Second.
Got a motion and a second? Mary Lee?
Fire Robin?
Yes.
Hutton?
Yes.
Powers?
Yes.
Luttrell?
Yes.
Turner?
Yes. And next, we have our city managers' report.
Thank you, just a few things tonight, as I think everyone is aware, well, I know we've, I emailed the council, we did enter to an agreement with Teneback on the hotel, hotel demolition, very happy about that, I think it was a great resolution to that, and looking forward to seeing them progress with the demolition, and then development of that parcel, and I know Mark Quickle is here, so I'm going to say congratulations, we are very, very pleased to announce that Mark is our new Director of Utilities. He's been, yeah. He's been with us for quite some time in different roles at the water treatment plant, and we're just very excited and looking forward to him growing in his new role. And then a reminder that we have our visioning and strategic planning sessions scheduled for February twenty-ninth and March first at the summit. Pete Auger from MTS will be facilitating those sessions, looking at a little over a half day for each of those days, and we'll get details sent out to you very soon. And then also, we are moving forward with the rate study with MTS, that has, data collection and submission has been underway already, so big things happening, a lot going on, good things happening, and excited to be moving things forward.
All right, city council comments?
I can start with, I'll also offer congratulations to new staff, to Mark Quickle, and also to Mike Maynes back there, so great excitement to have new folks joining us, and learning their positions, and bringing their talents to, to our city department, so appreciate that. I wanted to also thank our, and I put my, I numbered this wrong, Martin Luther King Celebration had to be rescheduled because of the snow, and just want to thank Micah Bray and our Police Department for what help they did with planning to be sure that everybody's safe, and that's from Bristol, Tennessee, and Bristol, Virginia, as we went from YWCA in Tennessee to First Baptist Church in Virginia, so appreciate that attention to safety and organizing, et cetera. Also to, where's Terry Napier back there, as our event person, participating in that as well, so thank you very much, it's greatly recognized and appreciated. A little late, and it happens every time it catches up, and we need to think about it and do resolutions. Dr. Tudor, please give a belated School Board Appreciation Week, thanks to, to our school board for the work that they do, and what they do with our schools. Sullivan County Health Department Health Council that we just talked about met for the first time today, and it's been officially sanctioned by Sullivan County Commission, and the Dr. Mayes and Gary Mayes, Gary May, hard to keep those straight, May and Mayes, are reorganizing a health council that I am fortunate enough to have served on two different ones over the years. Very exciting, and they've got a lot of great people at the table, including the directors of school from our three school systems, so Dr. Tudor and I are seeing each other twice today. Randy Wykoff, Dean of the School of Public Health from ETSU, Eric Deaton from Ballard, Beth Reinhardt there representing Chambers, Sullivan County Commissioners, Jessica Means and Joyce Crosswhite, both of whom have health backgrounds and interests, so that was really good to get that going, and I look forward to seeing what that health council can do to support the good health of our county, and I'll keep everybody updated for what happens with it. The other thing I was just going to mention is, it's with the decision today with the hotel, and occasionally still hearing reports on the landfill that it's not completely fixed yet, that there are days that are particularly bad, but I just wanted to recognize and thank our city staff for leadership, our council for leadership, for tackling the difficult problems, and I think taking the right steps that aren't always easy to do in finding solutions, and I feel good about both those issues, the paths that we took, and where the solutions are. Sorry, John Link is not quite there yet, but they're working on it. So, anyway, so thank y'all, council for leadership, and particularly our staff for everything they've done, and Danielle, I'm looking hard at you, because you've done a lot, so thank you very much. Thank you.
Okay. Next, Lee?
Well, I'd like to bring to everyone's attention that the BCM is launching a new event, June first, it's called In the Pines, Dwight Yoakam will be the headliner, along with three other artists. Tickets are on sale now, so I would direct you to go to In the Pines as a part of the birthplace of country music. The BCM will also be dropping the lineup for Bristol Rhythm and Roots, I've talked with several individuals that are on the music committee, and it is shaping up to be an outstanding year, so more about that to come. Believe in Bristol has its senior prom coming up. Terry, what is the date of the senior prom?
March second.
March second, and it's a cowboy theme this year, and I understand the ticket sales are going very well, and as of Sunday, I haven't had an update since Sunday, but there was only one table left, individual tickets are still available. I had the opportunity today to go to Thinking Out of the Box meeting about childcare as infrastructure, a lot of great statistics given, our own Matt Garland, Tom Anderson, April Eads were there, Kelly kicked it off today, and Lottie Rhines was there from the First Tennessee Development District, talking about how we can piece together a really great opportunity for childcare, and more to come, it's in its exploratory stage, but it was very exciting, there are revenues out there, there are pieces, that's not to say that we wouldn't have to make an investment, which I'm sure at some point we probably would, but we know that childcare is so critical, children do their greatest development by the age of five, Margaret knows the facts about this so much better than I do, and when children don't have appropriate childcare, or don't have those appropriate learning opportunities, or social, opportunities of socialization, they, they are greatly limited as to how they will proceed through the rest of their life. They can certainly overcome to some degree, but that early childhood education is just critical, so I was really excited to be a part of that conversation today. Thank you to our team. Clay was there also from Networks with his team. And I would like to say to our city manager, you have my absolute full support, you've done an outstanding and amazing job, it was great to see you at the nineteen twenty-seven gathering this past Friday evening, it was great for you to kick off, I know the Rotarians are greatly enjoying having you there, I think that you're placed on three prominent committees with the airport, and I know that you're just taking in all that you possibly can, so I just want to make it very clear that you have my absolute support. Thank you.
Can I just add in about the attention to childcare and preschool, et cetera, that one of my first real recognition of it came in a National League of Cities Conference that was probably two thousand four, or five, or six, or something, and the workshop I attended was economic development, didn't say anything about childcare, and then during the, that's what the whole workshop was, and it was, if you're doing workforce development, you need to be paying attention to early childhood development, because in fifteen, twenty years, those are your workers, and if you don't pay attention now, it's not going to be timely for later, so I'm thrilled to hear that there are some opportunities happening, and hope that we will move in all haste, and also put the resources where they are most helpful. Thank you.
I'd just like to say thanks to the staff, the city council, for all the hard work and effort they put in to these jobs every day. It's not that we just come here one day a month for a meeting, there's a lot of other stuff that happens to get to this point. I'd also like to recognize and say thank you to all the students at Tennessee High School that's here tonight, and if there's ever anything that this council, myself, or I'll just speak myself, that we could ever do for you, just let us know. And special thanks to Commissioner Harvey for being here with us tonight, and also Mark, congratulations, and Mike, I guess this is your first official city council meeting, welcome aboard, you're, you're sitting back there amongst a pretty rough group back there in the back, so, no, everybody's great, so thank you for being here tonight.
I don't have anything, so with that, we're adjourned.